Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Belavista City Council for Monday, December the 19th. I call the meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our goal.
Do the roll call, council. Councilmember Wills?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Wozniak?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
All the counter. Okay, before we start the citizen input, we have a very long agenda tonight. The regulation ordinance alone for SDRs is now up to nine amendments. Each one will be treated separately, discussed separately, and voted separately. So this is going to take some time. You may have wished you packed the lunch, but we'll proceed through it and get through it. Having said that, we have heard repeatedly the same concerns time and time again. So I would hope that this evening, we're going to hear some, perhaps some new perspectives during the input session. We have 13 who have signed up. That exceeds the 30 minutes. So I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and permit all those who have signed to speak for three minutes.
Go move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jurtson? Okay. Roll call again. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Snow?
Here.
Terry?
Thank you, Dana.
Mr. Snow said here.
I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm still checking in.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, gentlemen. Damon Wallace, 51 per fleet. I'd like to actually, Mr. Burke passed these out, so about the budget coming up, I want to remind the council members that as of a few couple of months ago, SDRs were bringing in about $144,000 a year into Belavista's budget. So that is a good block of sales tax revenue coming into Belavista. The thing I wanted, two things I want to address. First is that if you're about passing an ordinance, there's obviously going to be a fee to the STR owners. By this budget, we're seeing that Belavista's going to be getting quite a bit of money this next year. And so I'd ask those fees be reasonable. And when I say reasonable, I'm talking, you know, $20, $30, $40, something like that a year. And I do think it should be guaranteed acceptance of, as long as the, it shouldn't be if a person comes in for their lunch break and applies for it, then it should be given at lunch break, as long as it's within the limits of the ordinance. The second thing is the, there's penalties in there that have been through all the revisions, or pretty much all of them that I've looked at, that have called for punishment of the owners of the SDRs if the, if the people who are occupying it are doing something wrong. And I'd ask for that to be amended to where there's not a penalty for the landowner, because we don't punish if you have a long-term rental and let's say that person molests a child. You don't go arrest the person who owns the property because they rented it to someone who was a molester. You punish the people who are doing the issue. So if there's noise, trash, if there's people that are violating parking and stuff, then you address those people, not the landowners, just because they are actually renting it out to those people. So that's two things that I want to bring up to you, and I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dana and Michelle.
My packet's the one with the green highlights, just FYI. Resident Michelle Chiaco, 51 Perfleet Drive. When Councilman Snow called to table the STR ordinance and form a committee in January, and it was agreed upon, I was very thankful and looking forward to a rational discussion with all parties represented, something Mayor Christie agreed with. After Councilman Fowler introduced it again, I was grateful that Councilman Wozniak quickly put together a volunteer committee of both owners and non-owners, and tried to get maybe one or two things changed in the current ordinance that would be reasonable and acceptable. Although I believe we need to start from scratch and actually address what was complained about: trash, noise, parking, and occupancy. During a meeting earlier this year, I overheard a very angry neighbor who has made it clear they hate SDRs, that septic had to stay in the ordinance because that was the only way to close them down. At our committee meeting, Doug Tapp mentioned how there were many one-bedroom septic homes here, not SDRs, who had six people living in them. So how are those homes not held to the same standard? To me, it's very discriminatory. Arkansas Act 402 of 1977 says nothing of determining occupancy based on septic. The only time occupancy is mentioned is on page 52 in a footnote. On pages 50 and 51, the table shows what septic is to be based on for various establishments, quantities of wastewater flow, gallons per day. Page 52, "The estimated flows for residential systems assume maximum occupancy of two persons per bedroom." Let me say that again. Assume maximum occupancy of two persons per bedroom. Then goes on to specify where residential care facilities will house more than two persons in any bedroom. Estimated flows are to be increased by 75 gallons for each additional occupant. So again, we're back at flows. How has this not been a part of the discussion? On page 51 of Act 402, "A three-bedroom residence would flow the equivalent of 370 gallons per day, which is 11,100 gallons per month. I'm on a three-bedroom system. Using my bill as I have attached, my home used 2,800 gallons last month, far below what the septic was designed to process. At my highest usage point in July of 2022, I was at 6,500, again, a far cry from 11,100. Gallons per day is the key to septic, not bedrooms or occupancy. In our committee, we all agreed to three bedrooms, three per bedroom, with a maximum number of 12, so a reasonable cap. By the way, Act 402 defines bedroom as any room inside a residence intended for the purposes of sleeping quarters. If you really need to address occupancy besides a cap, it should be in line with the International Property Maintenance Code attached as the last page. I ask the council, as a full-time resident of Belavista, to please consider using a cap of three guests per bedroom and a maximum of 12 per home. To take any mention of septic out of the ordinance, since you will be addressing a citywide ordinance next year, I ask for an ordinance that actually addresses the issues I mentioned earlier: trash, parking, noise, and occupancy. Thank you and Merry Christmas."
Thank you, Michelle. Dan Goodman?
Merry Christmas. Anyway, I'd like to talk about our utility tax. I learned a little more about it when I had a water leak, and I was taxed on the wasted water. Quite heavily, I mean. And, you know, these leaks cost a lot of money. And mine was estimated at $4,000. And we have like 200 of them, or more than 200 as of November 1st, on properties. Now, I know this isn't the city's obligation, etc., to tax. And I'd like you to see if you could do something about that for people, so that they're taxed just on what they normally use, and not $20 because mostly is wasted water. And, you know, they have to do that, incur that, except the cost of the whole thing. Okay. Getting back to the leaks. The cable boring that's been going on in our city. A lady, two houses from me, had her leak start the very day they were boring. Now, I didn't know about mine, because I didn't, when they bored through my property or near my property, I had paid that bill, so I didn't pay any attention to it. It was the next month that it was really leaking. So this lady, she tried to deal with the company that's doing the boring, and, you know, got nowhere. They disputed it and so on. But, you know, when they're boring through our material here, our subservice material, I mean, they're disrupting a lot of material, rocks, I mean, you know. And this leak of mine was right, it was parallel with the water line. So I don't, you know, I think I've heard of a couple other people that claim that could have been the possibility for their leak, but, you know, you can't prove it. But I think if you, if you ever hear, you might look into it, because they have to have a permit to do this boring. I'm glad they're doing the boring, by the way. Okay, and, uh, let's see. Election costs. Okay, I've been, I've contacted my legislators, and I'm just here to say I'd like the city council to work on getting rid, you know, having the state legislature get rid of these, what do you call them, runoff elections. They cost money. They cost the city, no? Does anybody know how much those elections cost us?
Your time is up, sir.
Really? All right. Okay, so I'd like, I'd like that information, how much they cost.
We can get it to you, Dan.
And I think it's...
We don't have to do it yet.
Yeah, I know. I think it's, you know what I think about it.
Can't disagree. Okay, Don, Senator?
Don, Senator, 22 Brittany Lane, the infamous Brittany Lane. This is going to sound unusual. I'm a resident, I'm not an STR owner, but I strongly support what Michelle said about 6, 9, 12, with a maximum of 12, and totally ignoring the septic issue in an ass ordinance, but getting a commitment from at least three, preferably four, council members to take up the issue of septic as an immediate item with the new council in January. Make that object number one. Second thing with occupancy, fire regulations, so that we protect the visitors. The third thing is the number of SDRs. If we'd be good to put a moratorium on additional SDRs right now, and give it some time so we can determine how many is actually a viable number, not only for the residents, but also for existing SDR members. There's something called the law of supply and demand. If we keep the supply down, the demand people are going to have to go to the few that we have left, and it would be to everybody's advantage. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Eric Martin?
Eric, 27 North Cernan. So why do I use an Airbnb? It's to bring my family together. I'm from Kansas originally. Arkansas is a middle ground for me, living in Oklahoma City. This is a place that I come halfway to meet my family, to do fun things in this area. Now, I found Bentonville when this only had Phase 1 and 2 of the mountain bike trails. You know, this wasn't even a tourist area. This isn't northwest Arkansas today. Much different. You know, people come here now to buy here. Our current guest at our current short-term rental is here to move into their current residence. The people we have staying this weekend are here to meet their realtor to purchase a house. These are people just like me, looking to meet their families, looking to move here, looking to provide for a retirement house. You know, the refusal to hear our committee would be a complete shame. You know, this isn't beneficial to discriminate against a single group, and saying that there's no bias is just inaccurate. Saying that this ordinance is of the citizens is just not accurate. This is not an ordinance of the citizens, and you can see that just based on what was brought up about the runoff elections. Our general elections versus our runoffs, completely different outcome. You know, a lot more people voted in the general, and look at who they voted for. It's a lot different than the runoff. But this city council represents the total capacity of all the citizens of Belavista. Larry, you're an engineer. I'm an engineer as well. And engineers work in facts. They work in mathematics. I've sent you guys my daily water data for the last year. These are facts. This isn't a fight to be the loudest person. The person who lives, Abby Foster, that lives next to a short-term rental, that short-term rental holds six people. They're not out there throwing parties every day. They hold six people. So these are facts. You know, we're not up here to divide the community. We want to unite the community. This conflict stems from a lot of speculation with no data, and we need this data. You know, the previous work session, our lawyers stated the septic does not define occupancy. It was just brought up by Michelle. You know, it's not something that defines occupancy. Doug Tapp brought up at the special meeting that there's six people on one-bedroom septics all over Belavista that's known, but we don't do anything about that. But yet, we want to discriminate against our group. Mr. Burke, you said it'd be nice if we had an ordinance that we all agreed on, one that we could be proud of. And I agree 100%. That would be very nice. You know, there's other issues that we haven't even considered. You know, I've been to the ACC to pull permits for my own house. There are septic tanks with no lids. How do we pump those? How do we inspect those? What about the ones that are under houses, before setback walls? What about metal tanks? You know, what's the solution for all these problems that we have? And Mr. Flynn, you brought up California investors. You know, where are these people? These people are people like me, people with a family that want to visit, you know, their relatives. These aren't California investors. These aren't people that own 20 of these homes. You know, that doesn't exist here. And you know, this division in this council, in this community, is just astounding. We need to unite this entire community. You know, that's what this committee was for, is to unite the entire community. I want to quote the website. "Properties used as rental homes are at risk of taxing the home's septic system." What are the actual facts? You guys are making us out to be criminals.
Thank you. Gordon Sizer?
Thank you. Gordon Sizer, 4 Carroll Ray Lane. Again, I'm concerned about quality of life in Belavista. I'm concerned about safety, and I'm concerned about having good neighbors, people we know and we can trust, we're familiar with. This whole thing about SDRs has moved in on us rather quickly, and it's exploding, and I hope that we can get a handle on it and control it. You can always let, you can always let more of them come in, but to leave this thing open and let the numbers just grow and grow and grow until we don't have a handle on what the issues are would be very disturbing. They came in, they're here for profit. We're here for, for to live in a neighborhood that's safe and friendly. Personally, I like to know my neighbors. If I wanted to live a bunch, around a bunch of people that I don't know, I could go get a room at the Holiday Inn. That's all I got.
Thanks, Burke. Larry Kelly?
Larry Kelly, 12506 Colerane. I'd just like to say that I found our committee experience very enjoyable, and I really wish that that approach would be taken on a lot more instances. This has been really controversial. I think that only one side was represented whenever it started out, and we actually heard that from some of the staff, that there wasn't enough input from STR owners in trying to develop an ordinance. I think it works best when people come together and try to work things out before there's some sort of rulemaking to be discussed. Let us be a part of that rulemaking. It can't happen in every situation. That's not how city council can work. It's not how government can work. But it can work in a lot of situations that might be controversial, and I just think that whether we come to some sort of, I think we came to a lot of agreements in that. We had two short meetings. Well, one short, one longer.
Hour and a half, period.
Yeah. But, but I think we came to a lot of common ground, and many, many times, I think that that can benefit everyone if we just have a chance to talk. These are great that we have three minutes in the beginning of a meeting. We don't talk at work sessions, but if, if a group of citizens can get together and work things out, I think that's a really smart approach. And I think that Cynthia has presented some of that information by email to the city council today, and I support that. She's a non-STR owner, and, and I think that made a lot of smart points. So please take, take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Larry. Maria?
I'll pass, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Stacy?
I'll pass as well.
Thank you. Amy Malia Coffin?
That's okay. It's Coffin. Amy, 14 Poole Circle. And I handed out a packet to you earlier. We've talked about this before, so I'll be really brief on it. This shows my actual water usage data for the entire year, from last December till current. I'm a member of that Eye on Water data, so I keep an eye on what's happening in my short-term rental. I try to be very, very proactive, and I interview my guests to find out who is coming. On Airbnbs, there is something called Instant Book, and there's something called an inquiry. I make every single guest submit an inquiry to me, and I quiz them before I decide whether or not they're going to stay in place. And I think a lot of the other responsible owners here do that. I think the problems that you're finding are from people that utilize the InstaBook feature, because anybody can book it if they have the money. And so that might be something to think about and explore a little bit if you're wanting quality control on who comes and who visits Belavista. But on my septic usage data, if you look at the rating for a hotel, which is what you all are saying that we are operating as, per room, it allows for 150 gallons per day. So if a home were rated as a two-bedroom septic in, under hotel, that would be 300 gallons a day. Under regular residents, they allow for a two-bedroom septic to have a flow rate of 270 gallons per day. My home is a five-bedroom home. I sleep up to 13. I have not exceeded, even in my busiest month of June, 246 gallons per day. So I've never exceeded the two-bedroom septic. So my request to you is that if you are going to base occupancy limits on septic, allow us the time to get the septic in place that we need to. I'm willing to spend the $20,000 that I'm going to have to do to keep my house, because I love it that much. But I need the 18 months' time, and it has to be 18 months of me being able to rent the home, as long as I'm keeping an eye on my water data, and my guest count, and who comes, and how well they take care of the system. So that is my request to you, is if you're going to ask us to make major modifications to our home, to give us the time to do that, based on what's happening with obtaining the permits and getting all of the septic in place.
Good info. Thank you. Colonel Parsons?
You'll just pass those on to the mayor. I'll pick them up in the morning.
What are you running for?
My days of running are over. I've lost more races than anybody in the state of Arkansas in all history, and you know that. I've run against you once, once or twice. So Steve, good luck sometime. I'm Jim Parsons, chairman of the Belavista Patriots, and I live across the street from Steve, so that's where I live, Lake Avalon. We have been paying school taxes since 1874. The highest, 48, is the village. And we haven't got a dead-gum thing. We send our money to Bentonville, and they build these opulent schools, got a great football stadium that any community college would love to have, and we don't have a thing. The thing we're trying to do is form our own school district, and we have to start sometime. Belavista's going to grow, and eventually, we will quit putting our children on a school bus at 6:15 in the morning, and they wind up getting a diploma for 12 years of how to ride a school bus. And that's not a very good education. And so I think on the diploma, I want to say how many miles they've traveled and how many hours they've spent on a bus. That's pitiful. We need to have our own school district, and so what I've given you there is a petition. I've got to have 1,180, and that'll be easy. The jobs that you're now holding, the picture out there in the hall, is when we took a bus and went to the legislature to lobby so we could become a city in 2006, and we did it with a petition drive, and it's the same thing we're going to do with the school. So if you will, sign that before you leave tonight, give it to the mayor, I'll pick it up in your secretary in the morning, and we'll get this petition drive started. It took Jacksonville 30 years, and the reason was that they kept having lawsuits because of the segregation issue. I don't think we'll have that, and I hope that we can have our children being taught here at home sooner than that. I hope it won't take us 30 years. I won't let it see it, but maybe some of you will. Thank you very much.
Hey, Jim, thanks. Cynthia Thompson?
Hello. Cynthia Thompson, resident, 58, Walton Drive, Belavista. I left the working meeting with a bad cold. I was down for five days, so I apologize that my email to you all this morning was late to the game. I brought some copies, copies I didn't know what the hand-up procedure was. If you haven't seen it, I did get an acknowledgement within 20 minutes, I think, from Mr. Flynn. Thank you very much. An acknowledgement from Mr. Burke when I arrived. Thank you very much. In the spirit of not repeating things that you've all talked about before, and the spirit of coming late to this game and this issue, what I'd like to do with my couple of minutes is have the community understand that we need to come together on this, not be divided on it. This city takes a lot of money from the Walton family, and they're happy to do it, and we get a lot of benefits from it. But we all know Walton's big vision is to make this the mountain bike capital of the United States, which means a lot of people from all over come here to not only mountain bike, but enjoy the fishing and the other things that we have to offer, hiking and so forth. Because of that, we need the SDRs in order to fill the need for housing. We cannot get Cooper to cooperate to build along Belavista Way until the city acquisitions property, I don't know what the process is for that, but something on the west side where you all can have a developer put up something where people can stay. SDRs are really needed, and the people who come to bike here want...
Control it. You can always let, you can always let more of them come in. But to leave this thing open and let the numbers just grow and grow and grow until we don't have a handle on what the issues are would be very disturbing. They came in. They're here for profit. We're here for, for to live in a neighborhood that's safe and friendly. Personally, I like to know my neighbors. If I wanted to live a bunch, around a bunch of people that I don't know, I could go get a room at the Holiday Inn. That's all I got.
Larry Kelly, 1-2, 506 Collin Lane. I'd just like to say that I found our committee experience very enjoyable, and I really wish that that approach would be taken on a lot more instances. This has been really controversial. I think that only one side was represented whenever it started out, and we actually heard that from some of the staff, that there wasn't enough input from STR owners in trying to develop an ordinance. I think it works best when people come together and try to work things out before there's some sort of rulemaking to be discussed. Let us be a part of that rulemaking. It can't happen in every situation. That's not how city council can work. It's not how government can work. But it can work in a lot of situations that might be controversial. And I just think that whether we come to some sort of, I think we came to a lot of agreements in that. We had two short meetings. Well, one short, one longer.
Over and a half, period.
Yeah. But, but I think we came to a lot of common ground, and many, many times I think that that can benefit everyone if we just have a chance to talk. These are great that we have three minutes in the beginning of a meeting. We don't talk at work sessions, but if, if a group of citizens can get together and work things out, I think that's a really smart approach. And I think that Cynthia has presented some of that information by email to the city council today, and I support that. She's a non-STR owner, and, and I think that made a lot of smart points. So please take, take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Larry. Maria?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Stacy?
I'll pass as well.
Thank you. Amy Malia Coffin?
That's okay. It's Coffin. It's Amy, 14 Pool Circle. And I handed out a packet to you earlier. We've talked about this before, so I'll be really brief on it. This shows my actual water usage data for the entire year from last December till current. I'm a member of that Eye on Water data, so I keep an eye on what's happening in my short-term rental. I try to be very, very proactive, and I interview my guests to find out who is coming. On Airbnbs, there is something called Instant Book, and there's something called an inquiry. I make every single guest submit an inquiry to me, and I quiz them before I decide whether or not they're going to stay in place. And I think a lot of the other responsible owners here do that. I think the problems that you're finding are from people that utilize the InstaBook feature, because anybody can book it if they have the money. And so that might be something to think about and explore a little bit if you're wanting quality control on who comes and who visits Bella Vista. But on my septic usage data, if you look at the rating for a hotel, which is what you all are saying that we are operating as, per room, it allows for 150 gallons per day. So if a home were rated as a two-bedroom septic in, under hotel, that would be 300 gallons a day. Under regular residents, they allow for a two-bedroom septic to have a flow rate of 270 gallons per day. My home is a five-bedroom home. I sleep up to 13:00. I have not exceeded, even in my busiest month of June, 246 gallons per day. So I've never exceeded the two-bedroom septic. So my request to you is that if you are going to base occupancy limits on septic, allow us the time to get the septic in place that we need to. I'm willing to spend the $20,000 that I'm going to have to do to keep my house, because I love it that much. But I need the 18 months' time, and it has to be 18 months of me being able to rent the home, as long as I'm keeping an eye on my water data, and my guest count, and who comes, and how well they take care of the system. So that is my request to you, is if you're going to ask us to make major modifications to our home, to give us the time to do that based on what's happening with obtaining the permits and getting all of the septic in place.
Good info. Thank you.
You'll just pass those on to the mayor. I'll pick them up in the morning.
What are you running for?
My days of running are over. I've lost more races than anybody in the state of Arkansas in all history, and you know that. I've run against you once, once or twice. So Steve, good luck sometime. I'm Jim Parsons, chairman of the Bella Vista Patriots, and I live across the street from Steve, so that's where I live, Lake Avalon. We have been paying school taxes since 1874. The highest, 48, is the village. And we haven't got a dead-gum thing. We send our money to Bentonville, and they build these opulent schools, got a great football stadium that any community college would love to have, and we don't have a thing. The thing we're trying to do is form our own school district, and we have to start sometime. Bella Vista's going to grow, and eventually, we will quit putting our children on a school bus at 6:15 in the morning, and they wind up getting a diploma for 12 years of how to ride a school bus. And that's not a very good education. And so I think on the diploma, I want to say how many miles they've traveled and how many hours they've spent on a bus. That's pitiful. We need to have our own school district. And so what I've given you there is a petition. I've got to have 1,180, and that'll be easy. The jobs that you're now holding, the picture out there in the hall is when we took a bus and went to the legislature, lobbied so we could become a city in 2006, and we did it with a petition drive, and it's the same thing we're going to do with the school. So if you will, sign that before you leave tonight. Give it to the mayor. I'll pick it up in your secretary in the morning, and we'll get this petition drive started. It took Jacksonville 30 years, and the reason was that they kept having lawsuits because of the segregation issue. I don't think we'll have that, and I hope that we can have our children being taught here at home sooner than that. I hope it won't take us 30 years. I won't let it see it, but maybe some of you will. Thank you very much.
Hey, Jim, thanks. Cynthia Thompson?
Hello. Cynthia Thompson, resident, 58, Walton Drive, Bella Vista. I left the working meeting with a bad cold. I was down for five days. So I apologize that my email to you all this morning was late to the game. I brought some copies, copies I didn't know what the handout procedure was. If you haven't seen it, I did get an acknowledgement within 20 minutes, I think, from Mr. Flynn. Thank you very much. An acknowledgement from Mr. Burke when I arrived. Thank you very much. In the spirit of not repeating things that you've all talked about before, in the spirit of coming late to this game and this issue, what I'd like to do with my couple of minutes is have the community understand that we need to come together on this, not be divided on it. This city takes a lot of money from the Walton family, and they're happy to do it, and we get a lot of benefits from it. But we all know Walton's big vision is to make this the mountain bike capital of the United States, which means a lot of people from all over come here to not only mountain bike, but enjoy the fishing and the other things that we have to offer, hiking and so forth. Because of that, we need the SDRs in order to fill the need for housing. We cannot get Cooper to cooperate to build along Bella Vista Way until the city acquisitions property, I don't know what the process is for that, but something on the west side where you all can have a developer put up something where people can stay. SDRs are really needed, and the people who come to bike here want to have that at-home feeling, close to the trails. What I did want to do is I want to share with you that the STR owners that I have encountered care very much about the community. This was on my email to you, but I want to read it for the public. Yes, they're conducting business to make money, but they have an earnest desire to see every bona fide homeowner complaint dealt with. As a point of interest, the collective input that we discussed, they had some great suggestions to help educate the public on what the STR means to a community. They are willing at their expense to develop the handout that each permit holder would sign receipt for and would include best practices for STR owners and information on city ordinances and POA rules. Requirement to post the city ordinances and POA rules, I think it did come up in one of your revisions, is extremely important. They see fully educated guests as the best deterrent to bad behavior. I would agree. They encourage STR owners to visit the homeowners near their properties and provide them with contact information in the event that their guests break the rules. It is a win-win all the way around if they police themselves at no cost to the city. Can I take somebody else's three minutes?
No, no. No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Grace Chen, 28, Brenning Lane. It's been months we've come here to talk about our story. It may be very difficult to understand the issue, sorry, until a best STR next to our house. However, we not just have one short-term rental next to our house. We have two each side of our quarter side. So, but not every STR created issue. The two STR on our side are two different owner. Their guests behave so different. One STR on our right side seems to always have too many cars parking in front of the property. If an ambulance or fire truck was needed, the paramedic may have a problem coming down. So I put some pictures for you guys to just look how I see the view since April this year. I have a question about how many cars allowed parking on one property and how many occupancy limit? If 12, maybe that would be good, because the one on the right side, I would say is the best STR. They used to, old house, three bedroom, but after April this year, it's a five-bedroom, has nine beds. So if based on, they can have three guests per room plus additional two, that will be 17 people. I don't know how safe for that and how many cars will be. Also talking about protect the residential environment and property value. The previous owner always, I mean, the STR on our right side, previous owner always working on their front yard. They used to have a really beautiful flower bed, lots of beautiful flowers, bushes, trees, but now, nobody take care. The yard, nobody wants a garden. Most of the flowers just die in summer. I'm not sure who would like to leave two short-term rental next to your house. Still, not every STR create the same issue, but one of the two STR next to our house, one did create a view. It's not pretty anymore. So I hope I can pass this picture. You see all the parking cars?
I thought I wanted to say, thank you.
Thanks, Grace. Okay, council, this is your time to recall. Anybody want to speak?
I was going to say, Cynthia, I read your note today. Sorry, I didn't have replied to you, but I did. So I saw the whole thing. I've got it printed out right here, as a matter of fact. No, I guess I'll wait till we get to the ordinance.
Okay. And Cynthia, Peggy and I talked about it at length as well this morning, so thank you for sending it. Anybody else? Okay. You have received the minutes for the November 1st regular meeting. Are there any errors or omissions? Mr. Snow?
I have an objection to the minutes.
Okay, fire away.
The November 21st council meeting documented a motion by Councilman Fowler to recall a table of short-term ordinance for addition to the meeting agenda. The authority for council member Fowler's motion was stated to be Rule 7B of the Council Rules of Procedure. Rule 7B requires a two-thirds majority vote by the entire council. The vote to add this table motion was a three to three, three for, three against. Mayor Christie, by mistake, I believe, voted to break the tie by voting to support the motion. A tie vote on a matter requiring a two-thirds majority should mean the motion fails. If the mayor by mistake chooses to break the tie in the affirmative, the vote is now a 57% majority, other than the required three, two-thirds. So my pending the, the vote to add the STR ordinance to the agenda for consideration was not a proper vote, and the ordinance should be removed from the meeting agenda and the minutes corrected to show that the first reading has not occurred.
That's motions out. And this is a review of the minutes, and any objection should have been registered at the time. That needs to get turned off.
A motion should have been registered at the time?
If there was a point of order to be made, it should have been made at the time. This is, these are the minutes of what occurred. Whether, I mean, you have, whatever you feel about whatever should have happened, occurred. But this is a review of the minutes. So are the, do the minutes accurately reflect what occurred? That's what the issue is before the council.
That's the minute before you started?
No, no, the minutes only reflect what was said and done, jury. That's all we're voting on.
Then would a motion be in order to correct?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, okay.
When you say a motion to correct, what do you mean?
I mean, the, the, the ordinance should not be on the agenda.
Well, that, the question is adoption of the minutes. So you'll have to raise a motion later for it to potentially even be in order.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? I entertain a motion to approve. Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Williams and Mr. Fowler.
Roll call, vote on the minutes. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
I vote no.
Carrie, five to one.
Thank you. Moving on to the October financial report. Kim put them together and sent them out to you. We continue to be very healthy. We have a very strong balance sheet, and we're ready to withstand a recession if that's the case, and all employees will remain employed. And we will still can have everybody here so that you can get the services that you should be getting regardless of whether or not there's a recession. The November report, of course, because we've moved this meeting ahead, we will not get the tax data from the state until end of this week or the middle of next. So you'll see the November data at the January meeting. Okay? I entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by Title Attorney.
Second.
Mr. Williams and Mr. Flynn.
All right, roll call again. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie.
Okay, we have two pieces of unfinished business, both ordinances. The first is amending chapter 109 zoning of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Bella Vista to divide short-term rentals to provide for inclusion of short-term rental uses within the table of uses to determine a short-term rental usage as a right or with a conditional use permit within particular zones and for other purposes. This is the third and final reading. Now, just so everybody's clear, this has nothing to do with the regulations. Okay? This is to make sure that the planning group in their table of uses has the STR, I wouldn't call it a symbol, but the STR language is sitting in the appropriate areas for zoning. Okay? So that's what this is about. Any discussion?
Question I have for council is that if we approve this but do not have a regulation addressing the operation of SDRs, can that be adopted at a later date?
Can what be adopted at a later date?
The STR regulation.
Of course.
So even if we permit this now?
It's allowed now. There's no regulation on it now.
Right, there's no regulation. What this does is makes it legal.
No. It does what, what we've said many times, and that is adds it as a use in our table of uses for purposes of our zoning ordinance. That's what it does. So that, that's, it's not, it's unaccounted-for use at this time.
Okay.
Anybody else? I entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Williams and Mr. Flynn.
All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Okay. Now we get into an ordinance regulating short-term rentals to provide for the requirement of a permit to operate a short-term rental to provide a process for revocation of a short-term rental permit, to provide safety and onsite septic inspection requirements for short-term rentals, to provide occupancy limits for short-term rentals, providing penalties for violations and for other purposes. This is the second reading. As I mentioned before, we have some amendments. I'm going to ask the various council members to address their amendments in the order in which they have been received. So Mr. Wozniak, you're first. I believe you have...
Mayor, I'd like to make my motion now.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that this matter be removed from the agenda because it's there by an improper vote.
So, so Mayor, here's, let me explain procedurally to you, Mayor, and you're the chair of the meeting. So when we did this last week, we suspended the rule to, we suspended a locally adopted rule. We didn't adopt any, we did not suspend any state law requirements. The local rule says two-thirds vote to council. State law provides that whenever the mayor's vote is needed for adoption, that the mayor can vote. Four of six is two-thirds. So based on that, you voted in the affirmative to create four votes. At that time, a point of order would have been in order by any member, including Mr. Snow, to say that that procedure was not in order and to raise the issue he has raised. If the chair had ruled in his favor, then that would have done, that would have undone the vote. If he ruled against him, at that time, Mr. Snow could have appealed the ruling of a chair and had the vote of the entire council to determine what the procedure would have been. To my knowledge, I don't know that we have ever suspended one of our locally adopted rules by any procedure, so there is no precedent. At this time, his, or, his, his motion, even though he's not stating it, sounds like a motion to suspend the rules again and to delete this from the agenda for further consideration. I'll let him state the wording of his own motion, even though that's not what he said. But just to remove it, because last week, we didn't, or last month, we didn't do something right, there is no procedure for that. That's not in, in form or substance proper.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Just a second now. I have a motion on the floor. Okay? Is there a second?
What's the motion? So his motion, well, what I'm saying is his motion is not in order. So...
Okay.
So if it's your determination that it is in order, you can request a second. If it's your determination is not in order, then you need to state that and move on to the next, move on.
I don't believe it's in order, from what I'm hearing.
Well, then I will make the motion that the rules be suspended and that this matter be removed from the agenda because of an improper vote. I mean, the rules clearly, the rules clearly state that it requires a two...
Let me, let me simplify, Jerry. Jerry, do you want to table this until January like you thought it was going to be?
Yes.
All right, so why don't you make that motion?
All right. I'll make the motion that this matter be tabled until January.
All right. The motion will be in order.
Like it was originally, originally designed because of an improper vote in the fight.
Well, no. What you're asking for is to have this ordinance tabled until January.
Be tabled until January.
Okay, fair enough. Is there a second?
Whenever a motion is not saying that it dies for lack of a second.
Right. So the motion dies.
Do you have to ask for it three times?
No.
No?
So, okay. So let's go back to where we were. Chief, you have four?
Yes.
So I'll let you pick the order in which you wish to proceed.
Okay, we'll just go in order as they appear in the original, original documents. Committee met twice. First time to just throw a bunch of stuff against the wall, second time to actually see what stuck and then bring it forward. We brought it forward last week. I thought I would get from the council either some strong gaze or nays to determine which of these we would go on with or which of these we would go the other way. I got none of that. So now all four of them are on the table to be voted on one at a time. Okay? All right, the first one, section two, it currently reads, I think, one year for a permit. We ask for two instead of every, every year, every other year to get your permit in order. That won't bring the price down as far as some suggested, but it would be a start in that order. So that's what we are asking for, to amend it to read two years instead of one.
You're moving to amend based on your...
Yes.
You're moving amendment one.
Well, it's section two, but yeah, that's my first amendment.
Right. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Flynn? Okay.
All right.
Let's open it up for discussion.
Roll cove.
No.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Have a debate on the amendment.
That's right.
Who wants to kick it off?
We'll talk about one versus two.
I think the concern that, that I have about this one, this one has been expressed by city staff, and that is that by extending it to two years and having a cap on the number of permits that might be allowed, that we could strand permits. We could have permits that are not in use and not available to be reassigned to whoever might be applying for a permit but might be over the cap. So I think rather than strand, the possibility of stranding permits for an extended period of time, I think we're better off staying at one year.
Okay. Anybody else?
No, I'd just like to say to reiterate some of that. I know city staff is not in favor of it. I talked to Doug Tap about it. I don't believe there are any other permits that are issued for over a two-year period. Doug wrote a note on, I don't have the date on it, I'm sorry. It was after the second committee meeting with Mr. Wozniak and his crew, and he says, you know, even if the permit period is going to change from one to two years and the permit amount, the permit amount needs to increase, the permit regulation review inspection enforcement needs to be paid for by investors, and I don't believe cutting the permit being helpful to do it. So, and again, annually, if we're going to set a cap at 600, which I stated during the work session and other times as well, we need to have a one-year permit process in place so we're able to understand how many permits may be available.
Okay. Anybody else? John?
I understand both those arguments. You know, we had this committee get together. The concept being we get some input from STR owners and input from other people as well. And so they've made a few requests. This one strikes me as being quite modest. If you think about it, STR owners say, hey, it'd be nice to have two years instead of one. And that's true. You could have somebody who's got an STR and gives up after half a year, a year, and still holds a permit. So you're leaving other people out. But that wouldn't bother, that's what the STR people have asked for, and it wouldn't bother the people presumably who are against SDRs, would it? So, you know, they're liking having a limit. If a few people get stranded, that's probably okay with them. So, you know, I just think if you're going to have a committee and they're going to suggest things, I have a prejudice toward wanting them to know I'm listening. So I didn't think this was a... So I didn't think this was a tough ask, so I tend to be in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Williams?
I guess my, my view is that I tend to share some of the comments that Councilman Burke spoke about, and that is that we could strand permits for that two-year period, meaning that we would have permits available but not issued because they run for two years. And so unless a STR owner came in and said, my permit's all over with, I'm done with the business, it wouldn't be known to be available. I do sense that the staff assessment on a two-year renewal fee, that we would need to increase that to make it, make it whole for that side of the operation. I think practically a one-year permit makes it easier for the city to manage, and hence that's the reason for the permits that we have currently as a one-year base, is that it's a pretty routine.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Take a vote.
Okay, roll call vote on the amendment. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Fowler?
No.
Burke?
No.
Mayor, you may vote in favor of it if you desire.
No, I.
You don't want us to vote. Okay. So that will fail on three to three.
Number two. Let's see. Subsection A of section three. It was brought up in front of the committee about the, some information that would show in the House that was part of the rental system. And it was asked that if the STR had somebody, and I don't like this 50-mile thing, but it's here, but if somebody was your caregiver slash contact person within 50 miles, then the owner of that STR would have their phone number on the paperwork in the House, but not their name. So that's all they're asking for. So if you have an STR, your contact person is close, they ask that their name not appear on the interior paperwork, just the phone number. We would still have the information at City Hall.
So you're moving your amendment number two?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. That's what it says.
Yep. So I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Flynn? All right, let's open it up for discussion. Is there a problem?
Okay. So, yeah, I, so the name, so this is off, this is amendment number two offered by Wozniak, right?
Yes.
And it's the first one. The name, address, telephone number, and email address of the property owner, and the name, address, telephone number, and email address of a person who shall serve as a local point of contact, who shall reside within 50 miles of the short-term rental property. And then to further, so this is the whole entire thing here, B as well.
No.
It's just the first one, A.
So, look at the top. It's a motion to amend subsection A of section three, and then subsection B of section four. So it's not, there's still parts of this that are going to remain the same, but only these, and these are together because they accomplish the same goal, which is to take the property owner off the information posted in the interior.
So, so A and B do the same thing but in different parts of our?
It's referenced in both places, and so we needed to fix it in both places in the draft, or in the proposed ordinance as it is.
And thus amendment two is really A and B on this sheet as it's presented, not just A alone.
It's A and B. It's the whole, it's everything on this piece of paper as amendment number two.
Right. Yeah. That's what I understood.
Okay. Anybody?
It's just that the name will not appear in the short-term rental. Is that right?
The property owner's name would not appear in the short, inside the short-term rental, but the local point of contact would. And if that person is the same person, it would.
Okay.
Okay.
It's just not really that clear, whatever I mean.
No, it's not.
As long as I understand.
Well, I think if you, if you put it back in the master document and read it all together, it would fit together, but we didn't try to eliminate.
So it doesn't become an or then? You can either put the name of the owner of the property or a local contact.
If it's, again, you know, A, the, so going back to section three as it's on the proposal, application requirements for permit, an application for the issuance of a short-term rental permit shall be on a form approved by the mayor, the mayor's designate. The application shall require the applicant to provide the following information. So now A will read as in your, as this amendment says, if you approve it. The name, address, telephone number, and email address of the property owner, and the name, address, telephone number, and email address of a person who shall serve as a local point of contact, who shall reside within 50 miles of the short-term rental property. As it currently reads, we say the num, the name, all this information of the property owner, and if different from the property owner, the name, address, telephone number. So we, we wanted to clarify that. So then B remains the same, and the rest of section three remains the same. Then if you go, the second part of the amendment is to adjust subsection B of section four. So if you look at section four, these are the conditions precedent to issuance of a permit. So we currently say upon receiving an application fulfilling the requirements of section three and prior to permit issuance, and we say something in A, and then we go to B, the short-term rental shall have posted within the structure in a clearly visible location the contact information to include telephone number and address for the property owner and the local point of contact. So we want the property owner out according to the amendment. So what it would say now in B, in the second part of amendment number two from Mr. Wozniak, the short-term rental, B, the short-term rental shall have posted within the structure in a clearly visible location the contact information to include a telephone number and address for the local point of contact for the short-term rental. A copy of the city ordinance, and furthermore, the rest of that remains the same.
Okay.
Just takes the property owner out of it, but if that property owner is that same point of contact, then that's.
But then the property owner's choosing to be that contact.
Got it.
Doug Tap?
Mayor, I think the STR owners that were on the committee just didn't want their address posted in the short-term rental property. They've got another name. They just didn't want the address posted. Is that right?
Yes. It's wrong.
What are you asking me to change quick?
Hang on.
All right, I know I can't legally do that, but I just did.
Well, yeah, you can get there, just hang on.
So you've, you've moved this, this amendment, which provides what I just read. So that's, that's what you've moved.
Okay.
You got a second.
So are you wanting to further amend, amend your amendments?
Quick, say what you want taken out.
We just want our home address.
Just the home address? You want just the home address taken out?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, home address taken out of what? The application or what's posted in?
What's posted in the house.
Uh, folks?
You're down, you got your point, okay? What's posted in the house?
Okay. So, all right, so it currently says the short-term, I don't, y'all tell me what you want to legislate. Don't make me come up with it.
Okay, Jason, here's what I.
Would strike address out of it and address?
No, I don't think we can do this on the fly. I don't think.
I don't think we can either.
Okay, we've had a motion on the second. We need to vote on what this says. But note that for further amendment, next month perhaps, for further amendment, what the objective of the committee was, was to get the owner of the property's address off of what's being posted in the short-term rental. That was the intent of the meeting. That's not what came about here, but that's what they're, that's what they're looking for. So if, if the mission of council member Wozniak is to fulfill the intent of the committee, then that amendment needs to be brought forth at a future date. And tonight, we're voting on this amendment.
Or if Mr. Wozniak and Mr. Flynn agree to withdraw?
If he wants to, yes, they can both agree to withdraw the entire amendment.
Jim, you want to withdraw the whole thing while we go to vote and get it?
Well, if we vote, we're going to lose.
Or, or, but that's not the point.
I know, but you know it's not the point.
Okay, the point is to get it right.
Yes.
And, and rather than go through all these procedures and machinations, just pull it and have it written properly, and as long as you agree and Mr. Flynn agrees, then it'll come back in front of our council next month.
And if, if for some reason it goes to third reading tonight, we can amend it anyhow.
Yes.
In writing. All amendments have to be in writing. So what I'm, what I'm trying to say is procedurally and lawfully, in writing, you can amend your amendment and have a separate and secondary debate.
For next month.
Tonight.
If it's in writing.
Okay, so we can withdraw this and then rewrite it?
You can do that too, but I, I can't write an, I can't write an ordinance on the fly while I'm sitting here at this table tonight.
I mean, theoretically, even if it goes to third and final and it passes, we can still fix this next month.
Yes, of course.
Let's vote on what we got, and then we'll fix it.
You can, you can fix any ordinance you've got in your book if you want to alter it in any way. So if, I, I'll leave it at that.
So Jim, what do you want to do?
Let's vote on what we got, and then we can bring it up. We can make amendment next month.
Okay.
So if we're going to do that, we have more discussion time.
Oh, absolutely.
So this is on the amendment number two.
On the amendment number two.
Okay. In part A, I submitted a, an amendment of my own, which is amendment number one, which deals with partnerships, LLCs, and those kinds of organizations as opposed to named property owners. And so in, so I'll be voting no on this proposal here. I understand what it says. I don't have a huge heartburn in what it is, but I think it falls short of identification on the building or on the STR permit application. And so I would tend to say I will not support part A. Part B offers a different scenario. And I think in part B, I would envision that if we have an owner and we have a local contact person that somewhere is on the permit, that it would say contact person one, contact two, that shows up on the permit that they issue. In other words, if the owner's not within 50 miles, then the person within 50 miles would be issued as contact one with a phone number, and the owner then would be issued as a contact two in the event that they can't reach the first person. That's a benefit to those types of situations, I think. Leaving only one number on there for contact may fall short if there is something of an emergency that requires response or attention by the owner, owner's representative. So that's how I, I see it, so I'll be voting no on this proposal.
Okay. Turn it off. Anybody else?
Mayor, I see this as a swing and a miss. This is not what the committee intended. We've heard that from both sides. So I don't see the value in, in approving this tonight. It's not what the committee was looking for.
Okay, anybody else?
I was just going to say, I knew this was going to happen. I mean, if we, if we read the amendments ahead of time, which I assume we all did, I knew that there were, there was going to be one, and then there was going to be another one. And my question has been, in my mind, what if we approve one, you get around to the other one and decide you approve that one? Does that second one overwrite the first one, or do you have to find a way to blend them? I'm just saying, I knew this was going to happen.
Yep, basically. So if there's another amendment to come back and change it again, that's exactly what would happen.
Then this one would get kicked to the curb, and if we voted approve the other one, then that one would supersede this one.
If it, yes, because they would, yes, I sure would.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, Mr. Snow?
That's why it needs to be tabled until January.
Jerry, 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 we've been there, the train's gone. Okay, anybody else? Let's have a roll call.
Okay, this is on the amendment as presented. Councilmember Snow?
No.
Flynn?
I've seen.
No.
Williams?
No.
Fowler?
No.
Burke?
No.
They're pales.
Jim, you next one?
I've got big shoulders, it's okay. All right, the next one is, has to do with the, with the septic. There's two parts to it. One of them was the septic inspection, and the second part was the, the pumping. This amendment would eliminate the pumping, but it would keep the inspection. Just that simple.
Okay, you're moving your amendment number three?
Yes.
All right, a second.
Second.
Mr. Flynn? Discussion. Mr. Williams?
I guess my concern, my concern is that based upon the input that we received from Richard Murphy, the manager of the DEH offices in Washington and Benton County, Benton County, or Washington County rather, has adopted a septic inspection ordinance several years ago, and they're finding that it's not very effective or informative in terms of assessing the conditions. The reason being is that the ordinance itself does not specify the standard for the inspection process. So you can do a walk, walk around, a sniff and scratch test, as Mr. Snow would say, and if there's no water showing, it's, it's good, the system's great, so that's what they write down. Sometimes it's in an email, sometimes it's in a letter, so the reporting is not consistent. The inspections are not consistent, and so I have an alternate proposal to this which reverses and takes out the inspections but keeps the pumping part as a standard. So I'll be voting no on this. I think, I think this will not result in a positive outcome because we don't specify what the standards are for the inspection.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Fowler?
I'm just going to say that the septic inspection, I agree, there are no standards really particularly set for that right now. We don't know what it looks like. I think we had talked about potential issues with capability of being able to do those inspections in a timely manner, even if we knew what they were going to look like.
I, I need to, I want to, there are standards for the inspections. They are the requirements of the Arkansas Department of Health.
Where do you find that?
They're in, they're, that's their requirements for a functional septic system.
And where, where are you taking yours out, Jason?
It's in the current, it's in the, well, it's in the amendment, but it's in section three, but we're looking at. Certifier inspecting that the onsite septic system on the property is operational within the requirements of the Arkansas Department of Health. We cannot adopt an inspection without a standard. I'm not going to let you do that.
Okay. Well, but where, where is that standard in the code? Where are you reading that from?
It's in the Arkansas Department of Health regulations. Those piles of, those, the, the figures that we've looked at, the regulations we've looked at.
But what section are you reading?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm reading out of this ordinance, Larry. Section three B.
Okay, Jason, so I'm, I'm on the inspection part of it?
Sorry, I'm.
No, that's okay. I mean, on the inspection part of it, I'm not into the details of the inspection part of it. I'd like to become familiar with the inspection.
I am concerned for the council's, we know there's no standards for this, but we're enthralled.
I, I'm sorry.
Well, but I, I don't know that there are any standards in the code. I'd like to see where that's referenced in the code that tells about the standards. That's my point, is that I don't know that the code outlines any standards for the requirements of the inspection. That's, that's my point. Even though it says the language here in the, in the amendment, I don't know where in the code that it has that provision.
Can, can I just say, we have had a conversation about writing a more comprehensive septic ordinance for the city of Valde Vista. That includes short-term rentals, long-term rentals, B and Bs, and even our long-term permanent residential homes, okay? I don't know exactly what that's going to look like, but where I was going with that, like I don't have real clarity on what that, on what this inspection looks like. Maybe it's very well documented in the ACT 402 of 1977. I don't know. I didn't read the whole entire thing. I've read portions of it, but I haven't read that portion, so I'm not really familiar with it. But knowing that we have plans to bring, again, a more comprehensive septic ordinance forward before the council in 2023, hopefully sooner rather than later, where I'm going with this is I would like to address this at that time, the inspection.
Okay, so. And I guess a point of clarification, if in fact there were requirements in the Arkansas code now, then Mr. Murphy wouldn't be saying what he's saying about the code that's in Washington County.
Which has been the law for 20 years, 20 plus years.
Yes, and his point being is that, you know, you do a walk around, you do a scratch and sniff test.
It's, Larry, you and I both know, it's going to be the walk out there and if there's sewer bubbling on top of the ground, it's not operational pursuant to the rules and regulations of the Department of Health. I don't have those rules to present to you today, nor can I provide you the ver, chapter, verse, subsection, sub-paragraph, number to the line that says that. But they have those rules, I can assure you.
Okay, anybody else have any comments?
Quick comment, just to say I believe this was a swing and a hit, Jim. I believe this was the intent of the committee for, to have this amendment as it's been put forward and therefore I support it.
Okay, anyone else?
As a point of orders, wouldn't this matter be better resolved at a work session rather than trying to resolve it in council?
It's not a valid point of order, Jerry.
It's not a valid point of order.
No, it's a point of debate.
Point of debate. All right, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Let's go to a roll call.
Okay, this is on the amendment as presented. Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
No.
Fowler.
No.
Burke.
Yes.
Perry, quarter two.
Jim?
Last one. I don't even have to get into it, but it's the infamous three, or six, nine, 12. The extra person per bedroom.
So you're proposing a motion to read out it in amendment number one?
We beat this up and down. We beat it up a little earlier today. When Richard was here, he actually said, although he probably didn't have the authority to do that, he talked about an extra person and a beder. But yet, this one here is the six, nine, 12 rule.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second was Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Is this three per bedroom as associated with the septic permit?
It's got to be a legal bedroom.
No.
No. No. If it's not associated with the septic permit or something, there's no way. Because that just opens up occupancy and there's a huge issue with that with residents in our city.
It requires, it's, again, I'll read, it's very short. I'll read it to you. At no time shall short-term rentals have or be offered for rent as having an occupancy greater than three guests per bedroom. The number of bedrooms shall be determined in the same manner as provided in the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code. So the intention of that is, the old debate we had a year or so ago about new construction and undersized septic tanks and all of that. We had an old debate about how the building inspector can look at a set of plans and make a determination per code as to actually how many bedrooms there are and not base it on, you know, someone putting a number or changing a name on a blueprint or something. That's the same mechanism that would be used here.
That is correct. And then a deed restriction would be applied if the number of bedrooms determined was over the number of rooms as per the septic permit, right? There is nothing like that in this.
There's nothing like that in this whatsoever.
So, and I'm sorry, I mean, anybody can say what they want and you can give me all the gallons, you know, per day on a monthly basis and everything else. Anybody can see this. This is a map of septic systems in northwest Arkansas. You see that red block right there? That's Bella Vista, okay? We're one big fat red block. Seventy-seven percent of our homes run septic systems. You could have a two-bedroom septic now open to possibly occupancy of 12. I don't know if there's a limit on bedrooms, 15 people, okay? That's just on the septic portion of it. The second portion of this is just simply occupancy in general. In Bella Vista, the zoning, adding short-term rentals to R1, R2, R3, C1, C2, et cetera. If I can get to this. So let's just say, this is in our definitions, a portion of our code. Dwelling, single-family means a detached residence primarily designed for or occupied by one family only. I don't know if you think that eight, 10, 12, 14, 16 people sounds like one family to you, but it certainly does it to me. And it's the high occupancy homes that are causing us our problems. And those are primarily the people we're hearing from at these city council meetings. I don't know when the appropriate time would have been to read this, but I do have like new Granicus, like numbers, if you will, that gives us kind of the outlet of how many short-term rentals there are in Bella Vista. And just because I'm going to, I could look at like one point here. But currently, we have 493 short-term rentals that have been identified. Okay, we're setting a cap right now of 600. There are 75 properties identified as STRs that are not currently being advertised. They could have exited the business or shut down operations for the winter, okay? So I don't know if any of those 75 will come back online or not. Some of them they may not. But right now, we know we've got 493 that are advertising. 280 individuals own 300 of the properties. Now, there are 441 of the 493 that we have specific addresses for. So there's another 51 that we don't have specific addresses. They're in the process of being identified, okay? So of the 441 that we have addresses, 280 individuals own 300 of those. Eighty LLCs own 99 of the properties. We have 79 streets with multiple listings. Grouping by community, there are, and this is just how it's defined in Granicus, okay? On Bella Vista East Side, there are 113 short-term rentals. Bella Vista Central, there are 108 short-term rentals. Courts and townhouses, there are 59 short-term rentals. Lock, Loma and Windsor Frontage, so these are lake frontage properties. Currently, there are 69 on our lakes. Nineteen courts and townhouse golf course, 16 Bella Vista in the Highlands. As we think about this, where do we have our trails? They're on the east and in the central, right? We don't have them out on the west side yet. That number will pop if that happens. Thirteen at Shakespeare and Bronton Courts. Seven on golf course frontage. They just started identifying those. There were no numbers on those prior, so we have seven. You know, we don't have really that many golf court, golf course frontage lots in Bella Vista. Very few of your play of our courses. Two Bella Vista area section land, I don't know what that is. Two on Windsor Courts, one on Tannier Creek Courts. Ninety-four properties have an occupancy listing of 10 or more right now. 171 have eight-plus occupancy. So, yeah, 171 have eight-plus occupancy. And again, these are single-family residential homes that we're talking about. Six occupancy in 156 properties is the most common occupancy listing. And 145 properties have five or less occupancy. So again, I go back to, we're talking about three people per bedroom, not tied to septic, not septic permit or anything. We're talking 12, 14, 16 people, single-family residential homes that are supposed to be occupied by one family. And that's it. So I'm sorry, but on this particular instance right here, there's no way I can agree with this. There's no way I can go with this at all.
Okay, anybody else? Steve?
Yes, I've been concerned from the get-go with trying to map our septic capacity into short-term rental occupancy capacity. I continue to be concerned about how that would take place, what kind of mapping that means, what kind of confusion there is around that. And I felt from the beginning that we ought to keep it simple. We ought to put a cap on occupancy. My version of the ordinance has a flat cap of 12. This is an amendment offered by the committee that even drops it down below that. If you don't have proper bedrooms, you can't bring even 12 guests in. It all depends on how many proper bedrooms you have in the home. But I think this is a much easier to implement, much easier to enforce. And I would support this amendment from the committee.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yep, John?
So my understanding is, say you had a bedroom, a house with four bedrooms and it was a two-bedroom septic. Under our existing ordinance, you know, we tried to be liberal and said you could have three people per bedroom instead of two. So in that scenario, it'd be six. Because it's really just a two-bedroom septic, so it would be two times three is six. Under this proposal, it would be 12. Because it's a four-bedroom house, even though it's two-bedroom septic, right?
There's no reference to septic in the chain.
Yeah, so, and another thing that, you know, I'm trying really hard to say yes on everything the committee came forward with. But this is the one of the four I really struggled with. And what really concerned me was Steve Burke's proposal of a 12 max. Because this doesn't have the 12 max. You could have five bedroom or six bedroom, have 15, 18 people. And, you know, that's tough, especially when, it's tough to agree to that, especially when you have a really small septic system. So this does give me a little heartburn.
I wanted to ask Jim, I've heard it referred to as six, nine, 12. And I thought the 12 was the max.
Yeah. Well, if you got the bedrooms, it's important.
Yeah. So if you have five bedrooms.
It does say it here, the number of bedrooms can be determined in the same manner as provided by the prevention code.
Right.
If you've got the bedrooms that are legal, then it would.
Allow for 15.
You would think.
Yeah.
I mean, we can go ahead and bring it out to 50 bedrooms and 150 people. You want to play that game?
Well, five bedrooms is practical. I mean, those homes are.
Like I said, the fire code's got to support it. If the fire code doesn't support it, then it ain't happening.
Yep.
And, you know, you can determine it either by your septic, you want to go that route, or when you do your inspection, when the fire department goes through and his inspection goes through, you can determine what's a legal bedroom and what's not.
Yeah. Because one of the things we're trying to deal with is just the overall impact on a neighborhood when there's a large guest count coming in on a regular basis. We're trying to, we're trying to recognize the impact that comes with that many people. And I think a flat cap on this is a good, is a good way to go. It's not there yet. We're not, we're not supposed to be voting on this tonight, so there's time to work this. But I still think if city council would consider a flat cap, whether it's 12, 10, whatever the number needs to be, we ought to put a flat cap on it and say, that's the maximum number of guests you're going to be allowed to market your short-term rental for.
Okay, Mr. Wills?
I guess I take exception to this. I proposed a different revision to the same section. But my objection is that we don't include the limiting capacity of the existing septic system to treat the waste from the building. And there certainly is a debate as to, does the state septic code put a cap on occupancy per bedroom? And no, it doesn't. It puts a design factor on it that in like fashion establishes a maximum while it doesn't say that. When we process a new building permit here, we look at two things. We look at the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code relative to bedrooms on the plan. We also look at it with respect to the septic system permit that was approved for that particular building and that particular lot in the city. And if the lot says it's a two-bedroom, if, I'm sorry, if the lot says it's a two-bedroom septic on the Arkansas Department of Health permit, then that's the maximum number of bedrooms permitted in the house. And if necessary, a deed restriction is added to that property before it gets a occupancy permit. So I think that we are kind of going beyond our ability to regulate in deference to what the Arkansas Septic Code calls for. And while we're not legislating against it, it looks as though it's different from the standpoint of how we process new building permits now. And I think that's an exception that we shouldn't look out.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes.
Snow?
There's a statement in the ordinance that says, whereas high occupancy and short-term rentals create a substantial risk to health and safety, create a substantial risk of septic failure for properties using onsite septic systems and for wastewater and have a high potential to create neighborhood nuisance. Where is the, where is the proof of that particular statement? Where have we substantiated that information? I don't think we have. I don't believe that's been substantiated.
How many complaints to substantiate? Five, 10, 20, 30? Will there ever be enough complaints?
Have there been any complaints?
Oh my God, are you kidding me? Just like last weekend, even at church, sincerely, in all sincerity, I live here, like everybody else. I've been here for 15 years, okay? When I was voting and I gave my name, so first, at church, the number of people that have come up to me and just like, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. You hang in there, okay? Stay the course. I'm voting. My name's Doug Fowler. And, you know, so the lady, it's funny how she recognized me. Oh, you're the Doug Fowler? Yeah, I'm the Doug Fowler. The guy right next to me, so you're Doug Fowler, hey, after I get through voting, can I talk to you? I got, I got something to tell you. Like, yeah, sure. We pulled me over to the side and he gave me his short-term rental story. I mean, more and more people come up to me and recognize me and talk to me about this every day. It's amazing. More and more people are being brought into the loop, okay? I think a lot of people that are being affected by the short-term rentals, I say affected, but they have to live by one. They don't really, they don't know who to talk to. They don't know who to bring their concerns to. Now, there are some people that do and we've heard from them, right? But some, they just don't. But now they're beginning to wake up and know that there's an avenue for them and they're really happy about it. I'd just like to say one thing. What's the moniker for Bella Vista? A place to call home? You know, the average occupancy of a home per the latest census in Bella Vista is 2.5 people. So now what? We're saying it's okay to put 10, 12, 14, 16 people into a single-family residential home? I'm sorry, I'll just speak up. That is absurd to me, okay? And I would like to say this as well. I actually wrote this. I said, I was going to say first, I believe there's a group of people out there who are being overlooked. Those being the STR owners that get it. STR owners who operate in a reasonable manner and manage their properties to reasonable occupancy for both the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood and regarding the environmental concerns that overloading a septic system could cause both short and long term. And there are those short-term rental owners out there. I've talked to them, okay? They really are not comfortable with what's going on right now. They don't like another group of short-term rental owners giving them a black eye. And I just wish everybody could be reasonable. Does it make any sense whatsoever to have those occupancy numbers? How many families, single, single families do we know that has 10 or 12 or 14 or 16 people? I don't know. Maybe there's one or two out there. I don't know, maybe, that has 10. Eight, I could see.
Mayor, can we vote on this?
Yeah, I mean, we've heard, you know, we've heard this all before and I bet you if we played the old tape, you'd get it. We know where you're at.
Okay.
We really do. But, you know, do we have to hear it again? And just all due respect, you haven't said anything new tonight that we haven't heard for.
Okay, Mayor, let's vote on it then.
There you go.
Everybody finished?
All for our question.
All right. This is on the way the amendment is written. Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
No.
Wilms.
No.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Flynn.
No.
Snow.
Yes.
Mayor, you may vote in favor if you choose.
No.
You don't want to vote?
I don't want to vote.
All right, so that failed, read three.
Okay, so of the four offered by Mr. Wozniak, we have one that passed and that is amendment number three.
And one to possibly change next year.
Fair enough, but tonight we have one that passed.
Yep, yep.
Okay, as I mentioned to you, I'm going to accept the amendments as presented. So the next one is Mr. Flynn. So the next one is Mr. Flynn.
Okay, this is, this is an amendment that has to do with the situation where someone wants to build a home and have an STR. And it was pointed out to me by some residents, and a number of people have mentioned to me they're thinking about doing this, but this one resident in particular pointed this out to me. So if you get somewhere in the vicinity of the limit, once you say the limit, well, then you can't reasonably say, hey, I'm going to build something and then rent it out later, because you're afraid by the time you get done building, we'll be at the 600 or whatever the limit is, and, and you'll be out of luck. So you can't take that big financial risk. So the point of this amendment is just, if you're a resident of Bella Vista and you're building a, or planning to build, once you have the building permit, you could go ahead and apply and be one of the 600. And that's true at the beginning, and it's also true later on. Say a year from now, there's 580 or something, and you want to build, it's true then also. That's what we're attempting to do with this draft.
Okay, so you're making a motion as presented to amend section four?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Steve is first, Mr. Burke. Okay, further discussion. Anybody?
If I understand correctly, the, the, the motion would be to approve or to give a, an STR permit to a house before it's, while it's under construction?
Before.
Before it's under construction.
Before, yeah. What's the comment that's issued that says that they can apply for the STR?
Okay, anyone else?
No. I guess one question I have, John, is respectfully, I've submitted a revision to this to make it under construction before they would be eligible to apply for the permit itself. And I don't know if that's a good proposal or not, but it was handed out tonight. My question to you is, as this goes along, it says, properties owned by a citizen of Bella Vista, it doesn't say... So that would be the continuing standard. So if I live out of town and own a property here, I can't qualify for this, this exception, right? Is that what this is?
That's correct, yeah.
And I can speak to, one, Mr. Flynn came, came to me to write this amendment, and the discussion was that someone would be building it, actually. My comment to Mr. Flynn is that's really not going to work. Because if you get a building permit, we don't have a mechanism to know when you have started building, because our, our inspectors may not be called out to do a first inspection. We know they can build, but, but when they came to apply, then we'd have to do a verification that construction was underway, which would be a whole different thing. I mean, and then what does that mean? That they took some dirt and moved it around with a shovel, maybe? You know, so it just really wasn't going to be something that could work, I think practically. I understand the thought, but practically, it just wasn't going to work. And so we left it with just the issuance of the building permit.
Is there a...
But it still, still would have the propriety that they would have to be a citizen of Bella Vista in order to qualify.
Owned by a citizen, that's what, that's what the amendment would call for, yes, sir.
How long is that building permit good for?
180 days?
How long is the permit good?
I think it's a year, isn't it?
Six months.
Six months.
Okay, so then after six months, then, that, that permit would no longer be valid once that permit, if, if you have 180 days and you haven't done anything with that permit and moved forward, then that STR permit would...
We didn't address that part. I mean, the permit's good for a year. So, and they would get the permit. Obviously, if someone is in that building situation, let their building permit expire, as it's written in this amendment, they would still have the permit for another six months. It would count against the 600, and would free up after the six, after the year it expired. That's what would practically happen.
Yeah, that's a more likely scenario.
Very slim to none chance of that.
I have a question for Director Doug Tap. If, if you run out of time and your 180 days is expired, you haven't started construction, can you get a renewal or a time extension?
Typically, you would have to get a new permit. If you let something, if you let it expire, the building construction will be extended.
You'd file for a renewal or a new permit?
What's that?
You'd file for a new permit, so you'd have...
Why don't you come up to the front, to Mike?
Yeah, the only potential problem I could see with that is, it takes someone five months to start to build. And then, we do have houses under construction at 20 months, 24 months now, so you could have a house under construction for 18 months that took five months to start, 23 months total. What do we do in the meantime if we've got other existing homes coming in wanting a permit, but they're already issued to houses that aren't standing?
They don't, there are no permit, there wouldn't be, if, if we've already kept, we've already given out the 600, there aren't any more to get? That's what would happen.
Yeah.
So you could have some of them used with under-construction buildings.
Could, but may, but, but may not, in some cases, because they would have expired, so they also don't think...
You could have people with STR permits that do not have a building permit.
So does this need to be linked to...
If the building permit expires at seven months.
Then this opportunity, then the STR application becomes now employed.
No.
It's up to you.
If the building permit expires.
Well, no, that's not what this says. If you want to do that in another, something, that's something else.
I'm just saying, from a practical standpoint, if the building permit expires and they haven't started work yet, they need to get a renewal, that would be one option. But the other option would be is if they don't get a renewal, then the STR permit should expire and open the door for that permit to become available to someone else.
The permits now...
That's not what this says, I know.
The two-year permits did not pass, so we're still talking about one-year permits. So let's keep that in mind when we're talking about it.
Any other questions for Mr. Tap?
So they would have to, if a year had gone by, their STR permit would be expiring.
Right.
And if you, the reason I worded that, this, if you look at the amendment, I say that the, it shall be granted an initial short-term rental permit, but that does not include a renewal. So they would not be able to renew that short-term rental permit until they had a building to inspect and could meet all the other requirements.
So, so given that, let's say they come in, get the building permit, make application for the STR, and it takes them six months to get started, and it takes them 18 months to finish, their permit's going to expire before they're ready to go, and so they would lose their permit then.
Potentially.
A tortured hypothetical situation that's not likely to come about, and somebody could, if they found themselves in this very tortured hypothetical situation, they could in fact renew the short-term rental permit.
Well, but if, they would have to meet all the requirements of the ordinance.
Right.
So then you're talking about a safety inspection, and there would be no building to inspect. You know, it's, it's not entirely clear they would be able to meet the requirements for a permit if the building was not finished.
Okay, I don't think it's a deal, Larry.
Yeah, it's encumbrance some issues, is all I can say. And I, and based on what the discussion has been here, my proposal to amend it is withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, let's go to the vote, please.
All right, just the voting on the amendment as written, presented. Councilmember Snow?
I'm going to abstain.
All right. Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie, I have one extension.
Okay, now we move into three additional ones offered by Mr. Wills. I'll ask you, sir, to start off with amendment one, if you would, please.
The First Amendment is to expand a little bit on the application form. And it's Section 3, Subsection A. And what it does is that it adds, for those entities that are LLCs, partnerships, or some other business entity with a name rather than a person's name, that they make the application with the business name and the key spokesperson for that entity. In other words, a partnership has a spokesperson, an LLC has a managing partner, et cetera. So that would be included on the application. Separate from the application would be a list of the business entity and the names and addresses of all participating owners. That's for the city's knowledge, not necessarily for the public. So on the official forms, it would say, ABC Partnership, John Doe is the manager, and then if he's out of town, they would have another name in there for the local contact. If not, then his name would be there in both places. That's what would show up on the contact information in the property permit. You'd have a contact one, which would be the local person, contact two would be the owner. Only the name and phone number would be there, so.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? No second?
For my second.
Do you move to amendment number two, Mr. Wills?
The two is reverses what we approved already tonight as amendment from Mr. Wozniak on the properties and the septic systems. This one here focuses on the three-year pumping prior to initial or renewal application, and it eliminates the inspection, viewing that as a, as an activity that would be dealt with in a bigger picture. Septic system ordinance to address not only short-term rentals, long-term rentals, existing properties, additions to existing properties, and so on. So it'd be looking at the entire spectrum of septics. And so that's why I left it off on my, my amendment. Other than that, it reads the same as it is here, with the exception of the inspection portion.
Okay.
I would move to, to amend the ordinance for that.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Fowler?
Yep.
So just for, just for clarity, and I think we've talked, talked of this before, a majority of you have already amended 3B to remove the pumping requirement and retain the inspection requirement, so you've amended it already. This amendment would operate to supersede your prior amendment on Section 3B.
Okay, discussion?
So does this have septic pumping but no inspection, or does it have both?
The view in writing this, John, was to deal with the inspection part of it as a separate document, looking at septic tanks, systems as a big-picture issue for the whole, the whole city of Bella Vista. So it would, it would deal with short-term, it would deal with long-term, it would deal with existing properties, et cetera.
Okay, any other questions?
This is simply a reversal of what we just voted on 15 or 20 minutes ago.
So what you just passed was removing the septic pumping and retaining inspection. This one removes the inspection and retains the pumping.
Okay. I'm not sure who changed their mind in the last 20 minutes, but let's, let's go ahead and do this.
Yeah. Well, I'm not changing my mind, because I didn't vote for the inspection. Whenever our ordinance was originally proposed, it wasn't exactly, I don't think, the same number of years or anything, but with short-term rental owners I spoke with, they didn't have a problem with the pumping part of it. Matter of fact, I had someone said they had already had it done, just for their own peace of mind, so they would know. In my experience, there's no issue with getting a company out to your house to do the pumping of your septic system, and they'll come out about within a week's time. That's my conversation, I did it, my neighbor did it, we had no problem whatsoever. My, again, preference would be to write a more, holistic's not the right word, but a comprehensive septic ordinance before the city of, city of Bella Vista, and include the inspections in that. But I would like to move forward with the pumping of these, of these short-term rentals, and that's going to reveal a lot to us right there. I mean, somebody shows up to pump, and the guys, they weren't doing an inspection, but these are really experienced guys that do that type of work, and they could kind of tell you just through a little walk-around, they think you've got an issue or not. So, yeah, I would be in favor of this.
Mr. Wozniak?
I would like, what we passed initially, to stand, and then take this, and the very first thing we do next year is start the septic ordinance for the entire city to include the short-termers and everybody else. Leave what we already passed 20 minutes ago, take Larry's thing about the comprehensive, and make an ordinance citywide, first thing we do next year.
Okay, anybody else?
My last, my last comment was that this came, came about because there are different views as to the prevalence of steel septic tanks, holding tanks in Bella Vista. When construction began in the mid-'60s in Bella Vista, I think steel tanks were an accepted means of construction for septic systems. I know personally, mine has been replaced, my neighbor's has been replaced, our houses were back in the '80s when they were built, even after '77, but they had a steel tank in there. So there are a lot of them around. The question is, there's speculation by some that most of them are done and cleaned out and replaced. There are other opinions in the city that say there's still a lot of steel tanks around, probably those are the ones that haven't been pumped ever, or certainly not in the last 15 years. So that's one of the driving forces that encouraged me to continue and propose this resolution or this amendment to bring about the fact that if you can't pump your tank, then it probably is one that needs to be replaced, because it's probably leaking and probably polluting the groundwater under the tank, even though the liquid may not be surfacing. That's possible, because the tank is quite deep.
Anybody else? Okay, let's go to a vote, please.
All right. Councilmember Burke?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Wozniak?
No.
Flynn?
No.
Snow?
No.
Vales?
One and two.
And Mr. Wills, you have a third amendment revising occupancy.
The Third Amendment follows pretty much the ordinance the way it is, except changes the three-guest-per-bedroom to two-guest-per-bedroom based upon the design standards. It's a good discussion that the Arkansas Septic Code does not specify a maximum person capacity in a bedroom, it only uses it as a basis for a design. And so, taking that in the contrary view, if you're designing it based on two purses per, per bedroom, then it would be logical and reasonable to cap the occupancy based on that same standard. So that's the basis for this proposal here, is to revise the code from three to two in two, in two locations in Section 5, Subsection A. And that's the rationale. It retains the Arkansas Fire Protection Code, Fire Prevention Code, and it also retains the Arkansas Department of Health septic permit as a part of the, how many bedrooms do we have in the building?
Okay, I've got a motion on the table for Mr. Wills, do I have a second?
I'll second it, just so we can discuss.
Okay, open the floor for discussion. Anybody? John?
Want to make sure I understand, I think the current proposal we have on the table is three people per bedroom, so this is actually stricter than what's currently proposed.
Yes.
The current 5A says as follows... The current 5A says as follows. At no time shall short-term rentals have or be offered for its having an occupancy greater than three guests per bedroom for short-term rentals served by onsite septic systems for wastewater, or three guests per bedroom plus an additional two guests for short-term rentals served by sanitary sewer for wastewater. The number of bedrooms shall be determined in the same manner as provided in the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code and, if applicable, the Arkansas Department of Health Onsite Septic Permit for the property, whichever is less.
Okay.
So what is the net effect here then? Is it reducing the occupancy?
It takes the distinction out between septic and non-septic.
So if you're on sewer, you don't get the extra two?
Yes.
Yeah, you get the extra two.
Plus an additional two guests.
I'm sorry, you don't get the extra one on it.
Right.
But you still get the extra two.
So for septic, is it?
So if you have a three-bedroom house, it would be six. Four-bedroom house, it would be eight. Five-bedroom house would be 10.
Okay, so this is reducing the occupancy further?
Correct. And the same would apply for those connected to sewer, but sewer gets an additional two.
Right.
But if it had a two-bedroom septic, and that's what the permit said, then it would be two guests per bedroom. So it'd be four people.
Four people.
No matter how many supposed bedrooms that would meet the fire code are in the building.
Keeping in mind, we're not the bedroom police, so.
Okay, your other, other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's go for a vote, please.
All right. Councilmember Wozniak?
No.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
No.
Burke?
No.
Flynn?
No.
Snow?
No.
Vales? All right.
That's the end of the nine amendments, of which one was, two were approved.
At this point, further debate on the second reading of the proposed ordinance is in order, or other amendments, if they're in writing.
So second reading as amended?
You don't have to read, you've already read the second round. We just proceed to regular debate on the second reading.
Okay, John?
I, I like to say I appreciate the committee and the time and effort they put in. On the three people per bedroom, I probably could buy that if we had a max of 10 or 12, something like that. I'm looking for that. You know, Steve Burke's proposal, it's been around for a while, had a max of 12, just completely ignored the bedroom issue. And the three people bedroom was just a tiny stretch for me, and I felt kind of bad, to be honest, when it failed 3 to 3. But I'd like to see some kind of max. I always thought Steve's idea of having some kind of max was a good idea. It's just my thoughts.
Okay, anybody else?
We're supposed to have 12.
What?
Supposed to be a cap of 12.
Okay, let's stick with this.
I guess, granted, there are probably some changes that we'll want to do with this. I would like to make a motion to move to third and final for a discussion. The rationale really is this. I think we're going to be back visiting this with some amendments to the ordinance.
Okay.
Regardless of what we do, but the rationale for moving it ahead, it moves and allows the Department of Community Services to start with their setting up the program on their side of things. And that's going to be 60 days out from the effective date.
I have a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Second.
Second, Mr. Fowler. Discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You know, in the absence of some specific urgent reason why we would need to suspend the rules and break procedure to go to third and final, in the absence of that, I don't think that's in the city council's best interest. I don't think it's in Belvista's best interest. I oppose moving to third and final.
Any other discussion?
I agree with Mr. Burke. There's no reason to go to third and final.
As I, as I pointed out, the only rationale is is that it starts the ball rolling in terms of the Department of Community Development, Community Services, getting their program together and setting it up because they have something to start with. Granted, there'll be refinements even as we go, probably a year from now, because we will learn some new things about how the program is working. So I suspect we'll be back visiting this again.
But they're not going to do anything before the first year anyway.
No, but it starts, it starts the wheel going in terms of them doing things. And so it's 60 days out from the effective date before it takes effect. We can make amendments to this all day long to change it within those 60 days. As we see fit, and there's obviously discussion that I think some of the members of the council feels we should make adjustments too.
Mr. Snow, anything else?
So again, so why the rush then? Why the rush to pass it tonight?
Okay, anybody else?
Well, in my opinion, this is hardly a rush. In going back through from the beginning, when I very first, you know, listened to residents and feedback and started formulating, you know, my own thoughts, doing my own research. I mean, I think I started something like June of 2020. The first ordinance that I began writing, I saw my copy today, was December the 9th of 2021. And the first ordinance was actually proposed in June of 2022. This is December. And, you know, we had, what was it, public comment? Not public comment, we had a public session. Was it March or April? So this is hardly, feels like we're doing something like this is a sense of urgency. What I'm saying is, this has been a long time coming. We're only talking like one more month. And we will have a new city council seated at that time. I don't really think anything's going to change. To your point, it's time to start getting, you know, everything organized, get the ducks in a row, give Doug's department time to evaluate the resources they're going to need, you know, and, and start, you know, calculating what they're going to be needing to do real time. So in my opinion, it's time to go ahead and move forward.
Okay, anyone else?
Mayor Christie, just for the argument that it gives city staff more time, I don't understand that argument. It gives them less time. It gives them more time if we stay on procedure and do the third and final vote next month.
Okay, anyone else? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Okay, this is to suspend the rules and move to third and final. Councilmember Snow?
No.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
No.
Kerry's 4 to 2.
Okay, third and final. Regulating short-term rentals to provide for the requirement of a permit to operate a short-term rental to provide a process for provocation of a short-term rental permit to provide safety and onsite septic inspection requirements for short-term rentals, to provide occupancy limits for short-term rentals, providing penalties for violations, and for other purposes as amended.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mayor Christie, much respect to all the work that's gone into this. I don't think it's ready yet. I don't understand the rush. I'm not prepared to support it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's take the vote, please.
Okay, this is the motion to adopt. Councilmember Snow?
No.
Burke?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Kerry's 4 to 2.
Okay. Moving on to new business. Under section C, there is a resolution setting the meeting schedule of the Belvista City Council for the calendar year 2023. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at this. You saw it at the work session. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing honored, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fowler or Mr. Wills? Mr. Jirtson?
Yep, one second. All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Kerry, 6-0.
Thank you. The next resolution is authorizing budgetary funding transfers between departments in the 2022 annual city budget. Again, that's number D in your package. And as I mentioned at the work session, this is something that we do every year. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing honored, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fowler or Mr. Wills? Mr. Jirtson?
All right. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Kerry, 6-0.
Thank you. Number E is a resolution revising and approving new service charges for the ambulance services provided through the fire department. That two is in your package. Chief is here tonight. We talked about this at the, at the work sessions. Is there any further discussion or questions for chief?
Move to be approved.
Mr. Snow, thank you.
Second.
Mr. Flynn? Mr. Jirtson?
All right. Councilmember Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Kerry, 6-0.
Okay, the next is an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in a total amount of $46,392 for the purchase of one 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe special service vehicle for use for the fire department. This was originally thought that we could put it through a state contract, but that appears not to be the case. So we have to waive the competitive bidding, which makes it an ordinance. This is replacing a 2008 Tahoe that has seen better days. The police did something similar in June that you may remember. This Tahoe is included in the approved capital budget for 2022. Is there any discussion?
Well, I was just curious, the fact that we can't use the state thing, does that mean it's going to cost more than it would have if everybody used it?
No, not necessarily.
I have some information on that.
Oh, you're good.
I talked to chief, I was saving the trouble of walking up. So the, the whole discussion had taken place with Superior, thinking that this was the state procurement price. And then when they came to verify all that, learned that it was not. But they were going to offer it to us for the same price, but we'd have to waive requirements of formal competitive bidding. But we've discussed this before, and if you recall, you did this for some police department Tahos. Same dealership, slightly different make. The Tahos are made a little bit different, but they're special Tahos. And so we had to waive competitive bidding on that as well because they did not submit state procurement bids because of the volatility, volatility in the market in general and the cars in particular.
So the price hasn't changed?
It's the same as what you thought it was going to cost when we talked about last month, or last week, I mean.
Move to be approved.
You have to suspend the rules.
You have to suspend the final, Jared, is that okay?
Yes. Yeah, move that, we suspend the rules and move to the third and final.
Great, thank you. I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Flynn? Mr. Jirtson, when you're ready.
All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Kerry, 6-0.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Now, I have to do third and final. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount of $46,392 for the purchase of one 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe special service vehicle for use by the fire department.
Move to approve.
Mr. Wills, second?
Second.
Mr. Flynn?
All right. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Kerry, 6-0.
Thank you. The next resolution is adopting a city budget for the city of Belvista for the calendar year 2030, appropriating money for each item of expenditure and for other purposes.
2023.
Sorry, 2023. Earlier today, we actually determined that there was an error. And so the budget has changed by $57,400 up. It was in benefits and operations primarily in the library. So we have to pass a motion to amend the agenda to bring in, no, sorry.
We have to, the agenda doesn't need to be changed. What you need to do is move to amend the proposed resolution to replace the existing insert for the budget with this one.
Okay.
That's all you need to do.
So you're not approving the budget? You're simply approving the replacement?
Yeah. You want to have, you want this one under consideration?
Yeah, it's an amendment.
As an amendment?
That's right.
Then you'll have a final debate.
I moved an amendment on the budget and replace it with the newest version.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I've got Mr. Fowler. Any discussion?
Would you, would you run, Mayor, just, it's $57,000 difference, but what, what was the necessity of changing the budget? Did we leave something out?
Yes, we left $44,000 worth of benefits out that should have been in.
Okay.
And there was $13,400 in operations that should have been in as well.
Okay. Just oversights?
Oversights.
That we caught before we got.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Continually, all the time, we're checking.
Sure.
Making sure. Okay, good question.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, we'll go.
Okay, for a vote on this amendment, Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Kerry.
Okay, so now you have replaced the budget presentation in front of you. With the exception of the $57,000, nothing has changed. The head count has not changed. If there's no discussion.
I've made a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilms to approve the budget for 2023. All right, Jirtson?
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Okay, the next resolution is adopting and approving the designation of the Razorback Greenway as a national recreation trail within the city of Bella Vista. The correct attachment is now in your packet. Emily is driving this for us. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Mr. Fowler?
Second.
Mr. Wilms. Mr. Jirtson.
I should have learned shorthand. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is amending the 2022 budget to appropriate various grant revenues related to capital projects. This is in particular the North Sea Way Bridge. If you look in your packet, you can see the puts and takes, we do this every year, showing the total expenditures and the total revenue that has come back to us. It's primarily an 80-20 contract that runs through regional planning. So you'll see the total expenditures have 3.800 million, and the total revenue is 3.862, and today I signed six other requests for reimbursement through these programs. Questions at all? All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Fowler?
Second.
Mr. Flynn?
All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
The next resolution is approving the Bella Vista Advertising and Promotion Commission's reap, a reap appointment? Or just appointment, dude? It's not a reap.
It's an appointment, no, it's not a reap appointment.
Of Don Harris as an industry position commissioner for a term in July 31st, 2026. Mr. Harris is the current manager of the Harps Grocery Store. Is there any discussion, sir?
No, I'm just, real quickly, I said he's a manager of Harps, he's lived in Bella Vista since 1996, he actually worked at various Harps stores in Northwest Arkansas. You know, he's really well-known within the community. The A&amp;P Commission, you know, approved him unanimously. He'll bring a little bit different perspective to us. We have restaurant owner, we have short-term rental owners, we have Harps Recreation, you know, managers, and we have a member-at-large, and again, the grocery industry will bring a different perspective. Harps does pay the A&amp;P tax because they do have a, what is it, Fresh Brew Deli there where they serve customers, so that does qualify. He attended a meeting of ours, sat in on it, I went back and had a conversation with him again, just to be sure, he was interested, and he definitely is, so we're really pretty excited to have somebody that represents a different industry in Bella Vista on the commission.
Let's go to Mr. Snow.
Who is a short-term rental owner on the, or owners on the commission?
Melissa Wells.
Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wilms and Mr. Flynn?
All right. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
The final is an ordinance, amending section 107-159, applicability of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to remove the requirement that improvements, renovations, or changes to existing buildings or developments that do not increase gross floor area be required to present development plans. This has come from staff, I believe it also originated with the Planning Commission. Greg?
Yeah.
We talked about this at the work session, and Taylor is here as well as Doug, if you have any further questions.
Basically, this removes the requirement of a development plan if you're going to remodel inside a building that does not increase its size.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final. Second.
Mr. Flynn?
Flynn, you got it, you got it.
All right, on the, suspending the rules. Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
No.
Okay. Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Carey, four to two.
That's the suspension of the rules.
Right. Okay, so this is the third and final reading. Amending section 107-159, applicability of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to remove the requirement that improvements, renovations, or changes to existing buildings or development that do not increase gross floor area be required to present development plans. That was the third and final reading.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Wilms?
Second.
Mr. Flynn? With an assist by Mr. Wozniak.
Okay, motion to adopt. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Okay, that's the end of the business. We now go to the announcements, the next city council work. Yes?
If I may?
Yes, sir.
You have the floor?
Yes.
I would like to, I would like to thank Mayor Peter Christie for his due service to the city for the last eight years. Mr. Christie entered politics with a fanfare and has continued those with his colored sock program. I really enjoyed that. My wife even finally picked out a pair for herself this time. He's continued to establish a high-quality standard for the performance of the mayor in that duty. I think he probably didn't anticipate that it was going to be as strenuous as it was, but he's certainly done an admirable job in maintaining the high-quality performance in that position. He's also endured all of the demands of the position. It's not a 40-hour-a-week job. There's much, many, many weeks, it's much longer than that, weather conditions directing and driving. There are meetings out of town that he goes to, many of them in Little Rock as a representative of Bella Vista, and serving the greater good for communities and cities across the state. He's been representing the city on various committees and commissions locally in Benton County, as well as at the municipal league, and has done a great job in those. I want to thank him for the eight years of service, his distinguished service to the city of Bella Vista. I'd also like to thank Steve Pork for his four years of service. It's a little short, but he's certainly been diligent in his duties as a councilman with the city, and has added to, added to the benefit to the community and the residents by his viewpoints that he's expressed, policies that he's proposed and brought forward. He's been a leader outside the city council in terms of the community activities. I think the Clean Up Along 72 is one of his sponsored programs that he's coordinated for a while. I want to thank him for that, and thank him for his service here. I'm going to miss you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Give me a stand your way for a minute.
All right, very nice. I would just say, I really have been honored to serve the residents of Bella Vista as a member of the city council. Mayor, I've had the pleasure of having a front-row seat to see the wheels of the city turn, to see this machine put out, excellent service. It's been an honor, Mayor Christie, to see you lead, and I have so much respect for your service to Bella Vista, and really, the spotlight tonight should be on you, but I know you wouldn't mind if I shared it a bit with the true heroes of Bella Vista, who are our city staff. And I've had, as member of city council, I've had the opportunity to see so many of our city staffers. They get up every day, they come in with a sense of customer service and professionalism, and it's remarkable, really, to see the energy that they bring, the professionalism that they bring. And it's always a mistake to call out some names, but people that I've worked closely with, Jason, Kelly, Glenda, Brenda, Doug, Taylor, Dylan, and Mike and Karen in our roads department are outstanding. I've become so fond of our police department and our fire department, our first responders, these people who go out every day and put their life on the line for the residents of Bella Vista. I'm so fond of you guys, and as leaders, Chief Sims, Chief Graves, you guys, we are lucky to have you, we are lucky to have all of the staff that we have in Bella Vista, and I'm so proud to have been a part of this organization and part of helping lead Bella Vista for the last four years, so thank you for giving me that opportunity.
And I want to add my thanks to everybody in the community who are supporting me for eight years. We have made tremendous strides. I can remember Frank Anderson and what he went through as our first mayor. Frank built the foundation and did a darn good job, and worked very, very hard, he did a lot of heavy lifting. And when I was running in 2014, I said, Frank built the foundation, I'm going to build the house. And I think we have built the house to the point where we are ahead of the curve. We noticed that there was going to be growth here, and we recognized that the infrastructure had to increase, and I want to thank everybody on council and past councils who supported me in these activities. When I came on board, there were eight direct reports, I now have 11. I've been putting teams together here and in the corporate world primarily for 40 years, and I will tell you without a doubt, all of you on council, who I didn't necessarily select, because the residents do that, but I'm happy that you're here, but for the department heads, I haven't, I've never had a better team. Thank you.
Mayor, I've got an announcement as well, I need to, I want to take a word to thank my friend here sitting next to me at the table, Mr. Wayne Jirtson, who's been our city clerk for the last eight years. Wayne comes in and does a lot of stuff, none of you see, it doesn't show up, and when it works the way it's supposed to work, you just never notice it. And so, he's done a lot, and he's always done everything I've ever asked, and he's always asked me a lot, and I've been happy to help him. And so that's just a contribution that does not often get stated, because we're over here, staying out of what you guys are arguing about or trying to, but I want to thank my friend Wayne, I hope he considers me a friend, I consider him a friend, and wish him the best, and thank him so much for everything he's done.
Thank you, Wayne.
Yeah.
In my retirement, I apologize.
Here's my famous last words, motion to adjourn?
Not yet, I still have to read the announcements. Okay, the next city council work session is 5:30 Tuesday, January 17th, at Bella Vista District Court. Next city council regular meeting is at 6:30, Monday, January the 23rd, here in the court. The planning commission work session is at 4:30, Thursday, February the 2nd, in the court. The planning commission regular meeting is 4:30, it's Monday, January the 9th. Is that right? That doesn't read correct. If the work session is in February, but there are planning commission regular meetings on January the 9th?
It's supposed to say January 2nd, not February.
January 2nd?
Okay. The 2nd is a holiday.
Cancelled, the work session for the January 9th regular meeting was September 29th, was cancelled by Bell.
So it's just not happening.
So there is no work session this night.
Okay, so February is correct.
That would be the next work session.
Yeah, for the next work session, okay. And the Board of Construction Appeals, the 3 PM Tuesday, January 10th, if necessary, here in the court. Now, Jim.
Motion to adjourn? Thank you for beating me eight years ago.